Call the meeting to order. First thing to do is approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on July 7th.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes.
Kylie moves, Alice seconds, all in favor? All in favor. Public comment at this time? Yep, you got the call.
I'm here on discussion on junk and abandoned vehicles ordinance. I turned in a complaint a few weeks ago to City Hall about some junk vehicles in our neighborhood that hadn't been moved or used for years. And then, so Tammy's gonna look into it and I didn't hear anything for at least three weeks. So I called up and she explained that the city attorney had looked over the ordinances I sent with the complaint, copies of the ordinances, and said that those vehicles were in compliance. So I wasn't really happy. I don't agree with the code interpretation that was done. As the code's being enforced now, I could go to Smitty's Junkyard and tow home a vehicle as long as it had four wheels and a steering wheel, doesn't matter if the engine runs or missing an alternator or whatever, and park it on the street and just leave it there. Because that's kind of what's been happening. So, I'll cut to the chase here and go over this briefly, but under the Chapter 7.44, Junk and Abandoned Vehicles, definitions, inoperable means unable to perform the function or purpose for which it was originally constructed. That's a vehicle. That was A, and then C, absence of one or more parts of the vehicle necessary for the lawful operation of the vehicle on a street or highway. And then, other part of it, this is formerly 107-2, Article 4, it's now Section 40, 1988. Inoperable vehicle must be enclosed in a garage or other building. Okay, here's a kicker, this is a letter sent to Joe Allen Volkmann on March 23rd, 1989, from Stephen Jones, Chief of Police, RE unlawful storage of an inoperative motor vehicle. And he had this behind, on his patio behind a fence, it wasn't on the street, it wasn't out in the yard, but the two, A and B, didn't have a plate. B, it was on jabs or blocks or something, but C, said vehicles absent one or more parts necessary for the lawful operation of the vehicle off on a street or highway. And this is ordinance 107-2, Article 4, which is now, number 7.44.040. Then it's, he has had to get it in a shed, or he was in violation. So, what's the reasoning why that ordinance was enforceable back then and now the same language does not work now? So, so you need to either get a second opinion on this ordinance, or reword it. The Sabbath has an ordinance, I get the Sabbath Herald and they don't have City Council or City Commission and their minutes, the Chief of Police always gives a report on violations and they, they're always, occasionally they're getting after people with junk vehicles. So apparently, their ordinance works, but something needs to be done. I'm on Planning Commission, we scrutinize problems and issues that come up and try to do what's best for the community and everybody involved. So I think it's up to you guys to do something with this. Here's a copy for Tammy of that ticket that Joe got. So that's all I have. Any questions?
No, I think public opinion would be just that, public opinion, and it's appreciative that you're willing to come forth before the governing body and state your opinion, and it's a valuable opinion that needs to be reviewed, so, and it will be.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment? Moving on to appropriation ordinance number 1403. Pay the bills.
What was the $6,700 bill for?
They bought bulk fuel and for some reason we didn't get their statement from May, so there are two months in there. Most of it is bulk fuel though.
Okay, thank you. CMT, it's $2,000 for?
T-shirts for volleyball and, and little quaddocks that are employees.
And then the last one I see on here, there was a Visa for $1,876, is that broken out as to what that is all for, is that a Visa statement?
It's probably not broken out in detail, there was, I think there was a laptop on there, and the rest of it would be Ms. Lady's office, I just advise, we can get it if you want to work it out.
I just wanted to make sure there was no other Visa statement on here.
Do you want us to get it? Or do you want to look at it?
I can get it.
Yeah, me and I'll be impressed if everybody wants to see it or not, I just.
Looks like it gets broken down into the different departments, yeah.
There's actually two sections, there's this, and then this.
Thank you.
I'm just looking to do that, and you can come up with it that quick? Yeah? It's normally another week we gotta figure that out.
1403.
1403, yeah.
All seconded. Ray moves, Mike seconds, all in favor? All in favor. We'll move on to ordinance 1412, amended Section 2.40.020 of the Sonica Municipal Code. This ordinance is before you for consideration as a result of the Planning Commission's recommendation to change the section of the code pertaining to the membership. It currently reads that the Planning Commission may consist of anywhere from seven to 15 members. Ordinance 1412 cleans that up and says the number of Planning Commission members at seven. And this was as a request of the Planning Commission.
Well, I'm thinking seven.
Is there like a certain makeup of the Planning Commission, like two have to be within the?
Outside the city limits, but within the extraterritorial area.
Okay.
Which is now three instead of two.
But that's it, just two have to be for, and no more than two?
It doesn't say no more than two, it says at least two.
Okay, I was just curious.
The previous ordinance said it had to have, what, between seven and fifteen? It didn't have to have fifteen, it could be, isn't it, let me just look at seven. So we're doing here just restricting the number down to just seven, we can't, if somebody else were to come forward and say, hey, I'm interested in serving in some capacity, that wouldn't allow us the flexibility of putting that person on, that's what I'm saying.
We do have two spots open yet in September if you know if anybody's got that.
The concern, the Planning Commission's concern, it's not a current one, but they can foresee that there might be a special, you know, an issue, that all of a sudden you'd have three or four people that come in and say, oh, I'm interested in serving, but they're single issue interest. And their, their desire is that people who are on the Planning Commission are there for the bigger picture as opposed to a single issue.
Self-serving issue?
Yes.
I think they were also concerned about a quorum and how it was easier to get a quorum of four than more people, if there were more people on it.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and adopt the recommendation from the Planning Commission for membership of seven.
Ordinance 1412.
1412.
I second that.
Ray moves, Steve seconds, all in favor? All in favor. Resolution 07-21, 2021, adopting the Kansas Homeland Security Region K Hazard Mitigation Plan. This resolution adopts the Kansas Homeland Security Hazard Mitigation Plan for our region. Region K is northeast Kansas. The plan must be renewed every five years according to County Emergency Management Director Russell Lirics. Adopting the plan is a requirement for receiving FEMA funds to mitigate hazards. There is an enclosed section of the plan that provides some information on how local entities fit within the region's plan, and it's in Tammy, and my opinion it is prudent to move forward with adopting the resolution. He actually came before me and wanted me to sign it and move on, so there you go. That's not bad.
Make a motion to approve resolution number 0721, 2021.
Jim boots, Alice seconds, all in favor? All in favor. We'll move on to street closure requests submitted by the Chamber of Commerce and Downtown Impact to close Fifth Street from Main to the alley north of Main Street on August 14th from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. North of the alley for the purpose of hosting a live music performance on Saturday, August 14th. The blocked area would stop on the south edge of the alley, so the alley will remain accessible. Kylie has been in contact with Freddie's and received approval from them. I know that was always an issue in the past with previous owners, so as long as that's A okay, I don't see no problem.
Well, the chief and both chiefs have signed off on it too. I notice the event is second Saturday live music, I was just thinking about whether...
Have more often, yeah, that'd be great, we can get it rolling. Got to start somewhere.
Are you going to set up a stage or?
Yeah, either a... Like a trailer probably. The Chamber actually is the proud owners of an old hay trailer that really needs to be looked at because I don't think anyone's used it in a few years, but if that's not going to work, I'll find someone with a fund that'll bring one in.
Well, I don't see any problem, in fact, I think it's a good idea to kind of get some of this stuff going up.
And you take chances, see what kind of numbers you get, you know, I mean, we're getting more people in the town, and I guess, and I'm guessing, I'm just guessing, the little steps, they're not going to have a problem with it, they're pretty much shut down this time of year.
Yeah, and, yeah, they don't really have classes or things on Sundays.
The parking thing irritates everybody.
So will there be businesses open to accommodate somebody who's taken to it or?
Not like the retail, they won't be open, but yeah.
For drinks.
Yeah. Is it similar to what they tried to do a long time ago, they did for a while? Yeah, a similar type thing. We got really great response from the 150, of having live music and had several people go, might be able to do this more often, so we'll try.
Well, I'll make a motion, we go ahead and approve this for the 14th of August, give it a try.
All seconded. Ray moves, Mike seconds, all in favor? All five are in favor, Kylie moves. Approved Travel and Tourism Committee grant recommendations, it looks like there was a total request of $4,900 and amount recommended was $4,800, so. Looks like the Chamber SDI is the active applicant. The Sonica Car Show would have one in there for a thousand bucks.
Has the Jopco River Festival in secondary? It will, it all goes.
I'll make a motion to approve Travel and Tourism Grants as presented.
All seconded. Jim boots, Mike seconds, everybody in favor? All five in favor again. Kylie extends. The next issue is David Hupless resigned from Travel and Tourism Committee, we've seen his letter in there. We may see, if Erin wants to replace Dave, we might need to find some other interested parties, how many have served on that right now?
Five.
Are you one of, is there supposed to be a certain amount?
I don't think there's a set amount, they have tried to have ones from the different entities that collected the tax, and right now I don't think there's anybody that's involved with the hotel, hotel involved in it. There used to be, I would say, about 10 people.
I think in the bylaws, it's like a range, like it's like, no more than X amount of numbers, I think there is a number, but I don't think we've met it for a real.
So there is some available openings on the Travel and Tourism Committee, if anybody in the community is interested, it would be nice if some of those that generate the tax would find some time or somebody to represent them to be involved in the process. I think we've made that very clear to the hotel ownership that does generate this money, so appreciate that we have the money to deal with, and it would be nice if they're interested in being involved in how it gets handed out, so to say, that would be great. At the moment, we just need to accept the resignation of David Hupless.
I'll make a motion. I'll move in, accept the resignation of David Hupless from the Travel and Tourism.
Second.
Kylie moves, Kim seconds, all in favor? All in favor.
Is the RP part, part of this today?
We were talking about that, we're not sure if they generate transient guest tax or not.
I don't think so. I think that would be two separate entities. You're not providing the bed.
Bed tax.
Yeah.
Basically, that's what it's always called, bed tax. Don't know exactly how it's working, I'm guessing they're out.
One thing we discussed in our meeting was, I need to look into, like, places that rent their apartments, if those are collecting, if they should be...
B and Bs?
Yeah.
That's kind of a sticky little area though, isn't it, market?
Nope.
Merbo's and...
These people are renting out on Main Street just for a weekend.
It should, I mean...
It's a sticky situation for their, the person that's got just one of these and they're, that's a lot of paperwork, correct?
Yes.
For just, now if you got, somebody that's got 10 of them, it's probably not such a big deal, but...
I think, I mean technically they are supposed to be registered with the state, but...
But I think they've run into this beacon of two other places and they just kind of avoid.
I know that was discussed at the state level a couple of years ago, but I don't know if anything ever got passed.
I'm not sure. I mean, I don't know how you force...
I know like Airbnb, if they actually rent through the site, then obviously there's a better way of tracking because there's bookings and stuff, but if you don't rent through one of those sites...
I'm not sure how we've been tracking that.
Yeah.
That enforcement of would be paying for us.
Okay, moving on. Consideration of proposal from Ted Road Construction to replace Sunset Edition Lift Station. We discussed this at the last meeting and then received the enclosed proposal in the mail shortly after. The bid is for $91,498 and includes material and labor. Lead time on materials and equipment is three months. Would like to get this moving so that work could be completed yes this year, and I think we had $90,000 invested for that or something of that nature, if I remember.
So it's kind of in the ballpark, what we're looking at, what normal is?
Well, normal's not normal anymore, but with the increased prices, we're still pretty close.
Well, yeah, yeah.
I would say we need to move on with that one because we got it out on the coming in a couple of years.
I'll make a motion, we go ahead and accept the proposal on this, get this moved for the Ted Road Construction, $91,989.
Ray moves, Steve seconds, all in favor? All in favor. Okay, IT Services Contract obtained two proposals, or proposals from two places, Bachelor Controls and Networks Plus. The Networks Plus proposal is comprehensive and the Bachelor Control is fairly basic. Networks Plus visited onsite, audited our current practices and provided recommendations. The Networks Plus approach is proactive, with BCI approach seems reactive. There is one service that the Networks Plus proposed that we don't need at this time, and that is a server monitoring and management at 190 a month. The NP proposal also includes Microsoft 365 Business Premium at 100 a month, which we are paying for independently at this time. When you factor those two items in, the annual Networks Plus cost would be $9,828 compared to Bachelor Controls $8,400. There's a non-returning startup expense not to exceed $1,837.50 with Networks Plus to get the system set up and working securely. Tammy feels most comfortable going with Networks Plus, and it is her recommendation to contract with them for IT services at the rate of $919 per month, and approve the one-time startup expense not to exceed $1,837.50. I would have to agree with her recommendation and feel comfortable that, I would rather be proactive, especially when we start talking about how our system was hacked into recently, and have somebody onboard that's fully aware of what to do in that situation to keep it clean.
Yeah, I think Networks Plus is a good, good company, good organization, I did some work with that too, so. A lot of that stuff, they can just take care of you, all over the internet, over the phone, keep everything running, which saves a lot of time.
Or pay for Microsoft 365.
We're making for it, for a couple people, and then Erin pays for it separately on her own, and we, we've all had three different plans over the course of the last few years that can be combined into one.
So, cost of that over the last several years, what's, what probably would that be about to on a monthly basis, I guess? I mean, just, when you look at it, I guess, you take that into account, your Apple, I mean, your business is basically kind of the same.
Yeah, that, I would say that that's about what we would spend if we were going to be doing it on our own, which we want to do anyhow, so we can get everybody set up with email and secure multi-factor authentication and all that. Right now, I would say one of them was 120, another one was 100, and then the other one's about $10 a month, so.
Right now, we just got to take care of our, who's taking care of our stuff now, beginning?
On call with Bachelor, wouldn't we?
Well, the last time when the system got hacked, they had Bachelors come in and they set up a couple new computers here and set some things up, but otherwise, it's just, we have something we can't figure out, we've been calling them.
So we just have never had one, yeah, we was kind of on our own, so to speak, to a certain extent?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to know, because as far as it's IT stuff, Ellis...
This is honestly really far out of my area of expertise.
I was gonna say, it's already, it's probably closer to your expertise than my expertise.
We have nobody on staff that...
I guess the only thing I was wondering about, and this could go with this IT or this software that we're going to discuss later, okay, is there anybody in this whole mess that's going to take care of, okay, I think it's going to be in this software stuff coming later, but if their cloud-based system comes up, gets attacked and we're end up getting a ransomware bullshit throw at us, are they going to cover that when that happens because it's their system?
On Networks.
Yeah, well, you're one of them, I don't, like I said, IT's above me, so...
Yeah, so Networks said that they are going to be monitoring continually and they're looking at, they have systems set up so that they study our normal habits, and then they can see flags when things that aren't normal happen, and so they're continuously monitoring instead of once a week just looking at it to see if we've been hacked, and then they'll have the power to, you know, shut that down if something goes wrong, so that we don't keep, so that an attacker doesn't get any further into the system than they already had.
Did this recommendation fall within what SBS is going to be approved with what we have for insurance?
Oh, I think definitely.
With how we increased our coverage on IT, so to say, or internet services, whatever it was all to...
Yeah, I remember.
They were going to give us some kind of recommendation, I thought, I would assume that this will be fine with them.
I would think this would be more than fine with them, this would get us really well covered.
I agree with you, it's going to cover us, okay, I'm just... I, I agree with you, it's going to cover us, but okay, I'm just saying, okay, we've got this coverage over here. We've got this thing we're paying for over here and our system gets attacked and they're saying, hey, give us a hundred thousand dollars and we're going to give you your information back. Are these guys or often our service going to take care of it or are they going to say, oh, you guys got insurance, you take care of it and our insurance rates go up? I was just, you, you follow where I'm going on that?
I think part of what these guys would do would be to stop them from even getting to the point where they take our information. That's like one, because they're monitoring.
But when we're paying them a monthly fees and stuff like that, does, do they take care of infiltration, so to speak? Or is it, are we on our own? I just, I'm just throwing it out there, when it happens, whose problems it going to be?
But that's like the point, is they're going to try to, they're going to cut it off so it doesn't get to the point where they take our information. Yeah, they would cut it off and part of this has backing up, which takes a picture of our system so that they can shut it down and they can get us up and running again.
Good enough. I'm just, I'm just the worst case scenario, I guess.
A lot of information.
And they, they would be able to have.
You think?
Handle on some of the other programs that we're running, such like meter programs and those two.
Um, they will definitely work with our software provider to make sure that's set up how it's supposed to be.
Right.
Um, but as far as that goes, they, the next thing on the agenda, they offer the support for that. If something's not working right, you call in, submit a ticket online and they, they remote it and fix that part of that system.
How long will they contract that? Is that just annual?
Yeah.
They won't go any longer to just lock in that number for more or did you ask them?
I didn't ask. I didn't know if we wanted to.
I mean, I can't ever see it going down, but I didn't know if they would.
Like, if you lock it in, something better comes up, we're stuck with them, but to.
Well, I would, I would be, just try it for the first year to see how it works and then see about going with a longer-term contract then, after that.
Well, as you said too, because there, this one-time startup expense, yeah, is whatever it is, but okay, take our meters we put in and we paid for them and then we still had problems with them. It was kind of alleviated. We've got to make sure they actually know, get it hooked up, make it work. And let them use it for a while and see if it's actually doing what we want it to do. I don't think I'd lock them right away.
Yes, I felt like this first year, we need a lot of help. And maybe, or we, we might not need as much help. Kind of play it by ear and see how it goes.
Yeah.
Because then you could maybe reduce some of the things we're paying them for on a monthly basis after you guys are comfortable with. That was kind of, yeah.
Most years, the bugs work down to the system.
So you get two hours a month technician time? Does that look appropriate in here? And then if it's in and out of that, it's a hundred and sixty-five a month?
Yep.
Which I'm assuming we'll probably have some of that going on just because it's a first time, first year, I'm, I'm sure we're probably going to have.
Hopefully that setup cost will take care of a lot of those.
That's what.
Issues. But at first, yeah, we'll probably have more questions and things to work out. I know that seemed like a lot of money, but I think it's something really important.
I think, I think it was overdue. Should have been done a while ago.
What did happen with, wasn't SBS going to come in and somebody gave you recommendations on what needed to happen or did that ever come to pass?
We never, I hadn't really ever heard from them.
I guess that would be something that I would touch base with too as far as. I'm sure that what you got is sufficient, but they did indicate they were going to come back with. If we bought that extra coverage, what was their recommendations going to be? Uh, for what happened to our system so that we was covered? They, they would have covered something that was inadequate.
So they had to cross-check what they're offering against what they want to see?
Well, and it, did anybody ever do anything about it from the insurance perspective is what'd be my question there.
They just collect the paper.
But I certainly don't have a problem in moving forward.
You want to proceed with this tonight, then. I'll, I'll make a motion that we go ahead with the Networks Plus as far as the carrier or the provider for the. Software. It's IT software, IT software.
IT service contract software is there?
Hey, I have one, one question, quick question, that there's a managed firewall. Uh, says remove current Cisco router, install watch guard firewall. Is that, is that, is that expense in here for that firewall appliance or is that something they own and they manage for us? Just to repeat here, whatever, I'm just.
I don't know if they have to install it or not. I'm not sure, Mike, I have to ask that question. And it says a firewall appliance, five port, one thousand days T. Do you see that on page five?
Yeah, I saw that back there. That's why I was. There's not, no page A that says implement managed firewall security service, remove current Cisco router, install watch guard firewall. But, you know. I don't have a problem with this, I would just.
You're asking if that's another.
There may be another expense there or that's just part of this. To me, it's worth it. I mean, regardless, either way, you need to have, you need to have that firewall appliance.
Well, I'm thinking, say, well, you got by. Ten thousand dollars, you know, whatever, but, yeah. But I'm, I would like a second one. Ray's saying, but I would also run by SBS Insurance and make sure that they're compatible with what, what we're trying to do. On the same day.
Any other discussion? As a motion by Ray, a second by Jim, all in favor? All in favor? Software. Our current software provider, G-Works, has developed a software solution called Front Desk, which is a cloud-based application. The application will enable us to provide a new level of convenience to residents with online payments, email and text notifications. And online utility bill access. The service also includes form builders where residents would be able to apply and pay for pet license, billing permits, sign permits, et cetera. Online and agendas and minutes management as well. And visiting with our G-Works representative, Tammy learned that we could eliminate some items that the city has been paying for, which would help offset the cost of adding this application. They are working through the models we currently use and eventually all applications will move to a more user-friendly, cloud-based format. The cloud-based modules are to be priced similarly, similarly to what we currently have. Enclosed is a list of fees. The additional annual cost to make the change is eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars eighty-nine cents. Onboarding for the new software is a one-time fee of thirty-three hundred dollars.
So if people make their payments online, then we wouldn't be needing to send out bills?
Uh, they should be able to get their bill online as long as they've signed up for it and then we wouldn't have to send them out.
How much postage does it cost to send out?
Our bulk steps about four hundred and fifty and then we send another hundred by regular envelope, so about six hundred dollars.
Six hundred dollars a month?
A month.
That's for everything, not just bills?
That's just bills.
Oh, just his bills.
So a lot of people are, are auto-draft today or how many?
A lot of people are.
So basically then you could eliminate that if they would go to paperless bill, so to say.
Yep.
But if the ones that are already on automatic draft, they're still going to expect to envelope anyway, right? Or not?
Yeah, I think the goal would be to allow for a time period for those people who are on automatic draft to get moved over to the new system and eventually eliminate that. That way, that information isn't stored on our files, their bank information, they're initiating that payment and we're not keeping it here. So, you know, there'll be a time period of trying to move people over. And then those people wouldn't get that statement anymore that stands if we wouldn't be mailing it out. It would be different.
What, what I get on some of these deals is I'll just get email and it basically just shows what, what's going out. It's not on my draft anyway, so it really doesn't.
Yeah. And that's something on here and you can see there's, um, you pay for what you're using, so it starts. And you have so many emails per user per year and then if you find that you're sending more than that, then you can increase how much you need. But they start little small and then build up as you get people signed up and.
Is this where you're figuring on getting us all security emails too through this thing or?
No, that'll be through the Microsoft business.
Oh, the other side back here?
Yeah.
But you're talking eight twenty-seven and thirty-three, but I'm seeing six thousand on here on.
So there's a one-time onboarding where they come and they train everybody how to do it, help you figure out how to get this all set up. And I think that was the three.
Thirty-three, thirty-three.
Thirty-three hundred.
Eight twenty-seven, so. We want to decide on a.
Okay. So on the sheet here. Um, here's what we currently pay for and then this is what we would be. So we were adding that twenty-seven sixty, which would be the annual fee for the front desk. But we're eliminating this eleven hundred and thirty-two.
Uh, okay, I'm with you now.
And then there's a couple of other utility billing modules and billing and licensing.
Good.
And we may be getting a refund for billing and licensing because when I found out we were paying for it, she realized we haven't used it for. So. So one feature of this that's kind of neat, it doesn't have to do with billing and customers, is that there should be a way to set up a sort of portal for you guys to access. Where you can go in and see past minutes, past agendas, uh, the code book, anything we'd want to put out there that you could log in and see, pack it out there. It would be kind of a convenient thing and one-stop place for you guys to go and look up information that we've looked at.
And we'd have like past meetings too, if you ever want to go back and look, probably.
Should be able to.
That would be kind of handy. As soon as we talk, we talk about certain things for what we do.
Is there any time where we use?
I say make a motion to approve the software package also.
Jim moves. Ray seconds. All in favor? All in favor?
Thank you. You have no idea how excited I am about that.
Overdue?
I think there'll be lots of people that will be excited about online billing. Except for that.
Move on to approve updated pay plan. We discussed making changes to the pay plan during our planning session. As originally proposed for twenty twenty-two, but would like to have a go-ahead and approve it. Or an act of this first payroll in August. There is room in the current year budget to make this change. I think as we all know, pretty well known that cost of living has increased five to six percent in this latest round anyway. So I don't see where that would be a problem to go ahead and move on with that.
I would make a motion to approve the updated pay plan. Effective for the.
August. Kylie moves. Alice seconds. All in favor? All in favor? Next thing would be the police department body cams. Jordan has quoted three units, one for each of the patrol cars. He didn't have them quoted for the fourth vehicle because it's only used as a backup, not a regular patrol car. Uh, the cameras come on automatically when lights and or sirens are activated. Otherwise, the camera must be activated by the officer. The cost is forty-two fifty-one, four thousand two hundred and fifty-one with an annual recurring cost of six seventy-five. I had a couple of questions that I asked Tammy ahead of time. Obviously, that went up by ninety bucks for the mobile vest adapter clips. There was only two on there and I guess you'd need seven on props.
Maybe an extra.
And then the other question I had for her and she got them answered was that, yes, the sheriff's department does have body cams. And I guess the biggest question that maybe anybody would have is, what's the policy and procedure for an officer that's not compliant with turning it on?
Now, policy, I got her a copy of our order party place policy.
Which we seen here in the papers tonight, but that would be the first we seen it. So.
Okay.
The question would be, you know, if they don't turn them on, what's the consequence?
Will be, I don't know, go with the situation and then if we're tammying, we'll see what their consequence is for, for the violations.
And I think the reason that question would come up is because we had some nonsense going on where they went and did some ID and then just purposely didn't turn on their voice recorders. And, you know, then there was no proof that they were doing what they were doing because they didn't have voice backup, so that's not acceptable.
Yeah, and they, they got written up for it. There wasn't, they have it on their, in their file. It'll, it'll go with them.
I think there's some value to having these, this kind of equipment to cover all of our liabilities, whether it's you or us at the level of.
I agree, yes. And that's kind of what, I put this ball in place like last year, talking to Matt. Because that's, that's just times that we're in, that's, they're needed. I mean, it helps the narrative for anybody. Because there's something about audio, but there's just something about video that makes it. You see it when it's happening, when it's happening, instead of just hearing.
So there's, sorry, there's a car portion and a like on-person portion?
Yes. This is, this isn't a whole new system. This is upgrading what we already have. Basically, right now, there's already a camera in the car, but it, all it shows is what's in front of the car. This will be replacing the mic pack. So you're going from a mic pack to a camera, that'll sit. In this area. And just like the car cameras, as soon as the lights go on, it goes on. So at the beginning of the shift, they'll put it on their clip. And then, you know, if they turn the lights on or they go. I mean, there's a button on it, so if they get to a situation and it starts to become confrontational, all they have to do is push a button and it'll, it'll automatically come on and start recording. So, um, to go back to.
I'm sorry, say that again. Well, if they go to a situation, it becomes confrontational.
Yeah, if, if, it's sort of like out and about and somebody comes up to them and then it becomes, they start becoming confrontational or argumentative about something.
They have their sirens on or.
Yeah, so if it's.
So it's recording all the time?
Yeah, you can go back and, and get like, with the cars now, I can go back and, uh, I can get video, I can get audio, but it's always recording. So I will be able to hear what was going on, but I'll see where the car was and where, where the car was pointed. Or, or what was going on in front of the car right now. And so that's a feature with these cameras is you can go back and just call record after the fact. And you can pick up, you know, some, if Miles says, oh, I passed this car last night about ten o'clock. I can go in there and put date and time, this segment of about an hour and then it'll make that, that video for me. I won't, like I said, I won't have any audio, but.
This is on the old system?
This is on the system that we currently have right now, yes.
Right. This new one, there won't be one in the car now too? There will be one car and one here?
Yeah, there'll be a car one and then there'll be one.
How many of these come on with the sirens?
Yes. Yes.
If the sirens ain't on and they just have to be out walking Main Street.
Yeah.
Then they're gonna push.
They're gonna push the button.
But it's audio and video on both of these?
Yes.
The car and the?
Yes, there's audio inside the car and then there'll be audio on hand.
Plus the audio video on both?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what do they turn off?
When do they turn, when the officer turns them off?
He has to actually turn them off. So once it starts, like sirens, it runs until he actually shuts them off.
You have to shut it off manually every time.
So how much memory does this have to, to record? Does it then recycle and go over?
Yeah.
Probably a TV or something.
I think the battery or the camera is nine hours, if I remember correctly. I gotta. If I remember correctly, um, when I was reading, I think the battery life or, or the record life of the camera is nine hours. So, I mean, you should.
Yeah, thirty-one shifts.
Yeah, you should definitely have all that.
Yeah, it's gonna be running the whole nine hours?
No, yeah, it's not gonna be running the whole time.
So for the six seventy-five though, that's for your recordability every year?
That's the device license key, that's every year, so evidence, the evidence, it's called evidence, the, the system, the software is called evidence. And that's just so we can maintain using that system.
So how does your film or whatever you're recording, how's that recorded, where is it recorded?
Okay, it records to the hard drive that will be inside the car. And with this new system, currently right now, what we have to do is, okay, you go to a traffic stop and you need, you come back to the office and you need that video to, you know, help us re-record. Right now, the officer has to take a thumb drive out of the hard drive, upload it to a thumb drive out of the hard drive, take it down to our computer that we have designated for, that's the, the videos, and then upload it onto that computer and then burn a CD or DVD of the video and then go up to their room and watch their video. Where with this new system, it'll download onto that hard drive and once you pull up to the, the office there, it wirelessly will download and then it'll be right at their desktop. So they could, I mean, it may take twenty minutes for it to get off the car into the system, but.
But every time, then that is saved somewhere that if we go back three years to look at that thing, it's gonna be on that computer.
Yeah, I still have.
Because this, because this body cam has already started re-recording.
Yeah, I have videos from when we first started with the cameras to begin with.
So that, is that part of that fee is like the cloud-based storage or is it not cloud-based? Did you?
Yeah, yeah, that's part of that.
So the body camera doesn't necessarily store the data, it's stored in the car.
Yeah, there's a docking station inside the car that, you know, you get down to the traffic stop, take it off, load, download it onto the hard drive of the car. And then, once you pull up to the front of the office there, it takes it from the hard drive in the car onto the system inside the building. And it'll be right there at our, our fingertips.
So what happens in a situation where, what's, what proximity that'd be within the car, I guess, in order for it to wirelessly transmit the video from here to store it in the car, what happens if you get a, per se, a foot chase with somebody?
It's gonna store, there is some memory on the, on the body camera itself and that's what I'm saying, as soon as you get in the car, you dock it up and that takes it to the, the hard drive inside the car.
Okay, so it is stored on the camera?
Yeah. And then, then you dock it and then it will download it onto the hard drive in the car and then as soon as you pull up to the, the office there, it'll wirelessly download it into the system.
I was thinking it was Wi-Fi from the camera to the car.
You know, yeah, you have to dock it.
And is this a pretty standard system?
Yes, it's one of the, it's one of the most popular. The reason we went with this one is obviously it's exactly the same as the sheriff's office and we can piggyback off of their system, which is saving us quite a bit of money, we don't have to buy our own servers. Yeah, they're, they're already set up, they're doing this already and that helps us out and we can just kind of piggyback off of their system instead of the same building and everything. There is, this doesn't, this cost doesn't also have installation, obviously we'll have to go to HOGs and have it installed. I wouldn't think there'd be too much because all it is, taking the mic pack out, putting an antenna in, putting a body cam in.
That's not a heartbreak for them that they didn't sell the equipment, they'll install it.
No, they do it all the time, they do it for lots of agencies, yeah.
I don't see no problem with that.
Yeah. Okay, well, make motion, we go ahead and then go forward with the body cam to the end of this part.
So Ray moves, Mike seconds, all in favor? All in favor?
Thanks, Jordan. I ask you about this, but this policy's come off of Lexipol. Do you guys know what Lexipol is?
Heard of it.
Can you briefly explain it because I find it interesting and I know you've asked questions about policies, so I wanna know where these come from and how they're developed.
And so for the record, none of us had the policy till we showed up tonight.
Okay.
So we don't know nothing about it.
Okay. Um, the police department, a couple of years ago, I spoke with Matt, you know, the city has their own policies like that thick. Well, with law enforcement, there's policies and procedures for everything. Lexipol kind of as a, they sent me, we've been on it for a couple of years now, um, basically templates of all these and I went over every single one and entered our information and adapted it to us because it's a template that, every policy is a template for, you know, ranging from our size department to size of like Topeka. So I had to go through every single one and make it, adapt it to ours, our size of department. And then basically what Lexipol does is they have lawyers that every year, just they're, all they're doing is keeping track of the new laws and then they'll send me emails of, hey, you gotta update this policy because this new law that came out. So our policies are always, they're not gonna get stagnant and we're not gonna be behind, um, like with your racial profiling or, um, anything, anything that comes up with the new laws, it is put into, they send me an email and then there's a little update and I gotta go read that and, and either accept the new update or we can decline it. But the good part about it is it, or the acknowledgement policy side of it is like, they can have it on their phone, you can download it, it's an app too. And basically there's a, like, Phil, the first couple of weeks, he sat there and read policies. Well, after he got done reading the policy, you have to acknowledge it, saying, okay, yeah, I read the policy, I understand it, I acknowledge it. So that covers the city on that end, you know, they can't, something can't go wrong and they say, well, I didn't know that was a policy. You acknowledge it, you say you did read it, you did understand. Whatever, what they also offer is a training, so every month they send out daily training bulletins, it's about a two, three-minute little, you can go on to the Lexipol little website and they, they're called daily training bulletins, this is about two to three-minute little narrative of a scenario and then you have to answer that and, based, based on what our policy says. And if you answer it wrong, you have to read over the policy again and then redo the question, so they make sure you understand the policy. But yes, sir, I have, the policy, our policy mail is probably about that thick, I mean, if you print it off, but like I said, they have access to it on their phones, I am done on the computers. But we've had that for a couple of years.
Is that what pay was?
Yeah, there's a annual fee to, you know, for basically to pay the lawyers to make sure that we're always up to date on everything.
So do you, does everyone have it on, like, on their bullets and does everyone participate in the bulletin thingies? That's good.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any discussion on the 2022 budget at this point? Are you still working on that? Break the crew?
Um, we got a price on this spring creek, if we did edge a mil and a one and a half inch overlay, ballpark figure of a hundred and ninety thousand. I did find some information about county maintenance agreements on the thirty-sixth, I'm sorry, north of thirty-sixth on Eleventh and Eighth Street.
And they already fixed it?
Yeah, so we pay them every other year to chip and seal that.
But according to Eighth Street too?
Eighth Street, they have continued, the county has continued to maintain up to Craven Drive and that's what they're doing.
And they just did it too?
Yes.
And that would be on the west side of where they start over our problem, going back north start for the most part.
Exactly.
You know, right there in front of the training center house, there's a big drain tube there, drainage collection area. That is ridiculous from there north.
Okay, from growing up to that point?
Yeah, and even that first block.
From the CT two house, going back to run low rain, it really gets bad after that. And the closer you get down to where the county starts their maintenance is where it gets really, a big old deep curve.
And I don't know if you recall this agreement with the county on Eleventh Street was redone not that long ago and it split between the county, the city, Richmond Township and then St. Peter Paul, they's part of it.
The one on, the cemetery room.
Yeah.
Yeah, we went into that agreement a few years ago. But it just seemed like they wasn't, hadn't done anything in the last, so that's why I was wondering if they would still stay on top of their end there.
So I don't have much new for the budget yet, um, I didn't know if anybody had any questions though, looked over it more, anything?
Well, either one of those spring creek and, uh, Eighth Street, it's not gonna fit in the budget issue probably, correct?
Probably not, I mean, those are bigger projects.
Right, but it's something we need to figure out. But you got this, uh, spring creek, was that everything?
That was to be that, yeah.
I mean, the main road and the side one too?
I believe so. Brian got the estimate for me, it was an email from them.
But can that give us a ballpark figure of what that wants to, cause that would probably be a shorter run even out there too. And that, I think is.
He has some to price out, like, what sections would be and kind of where it would make sense, what side of the project, and we haven't heard back from them yet, but Brian's been on vacation, so.
Well, it's, it's not gonna happen this year anyhow, but I would still wanna know, don't know really how to run Eighth Street too.
And then the cemetery fence came up and I don't know if anybody's driven out there since we talked about it, but there's a section of, I don't know what it is, gray metal fence on the south end of the cemetery.
Correct.
And then there's a big row of trees.
Right.
Well, the trees are kind of right where you'd wanna put a fence if you're gonna put a fence in. So are we talking just to replace the little section that's there or are we?
Well, I don't know, but it looks to me that where that tree line is and where you'd wanna put a fence and some of that out there, there is a bunch of those, uh, of the old style, back in the day when they had the concrete, the concrete steel and then they had the concrete top or.
Big, and it's still.
And if they, and if they don't, if they don't have one of them, I'm thinking it's almost eroded off of what we're just trying to do, side of that concrete, some few of them. I think you need to build it out a little bit. Retaining wall, retaining wall slash fence on top of it or something to that nature because there's, there's a major drop off over there. It's been a while since I looked at it, but I can.
But a fence between the road and the trees is too close to the road and between the trees and the graves is, there's not enough room there. So it's not, it's not ideal for putting a fence there, just drive out by there and look at it.
Probably not gonna make everybody happy no matter what you do.
Yeah, I mean, that section that's there, it looks bad.
I would look, if you go further north, I would take a look at that and it seems to me that there's gotta be some kind of a retain, some kind of retaining wall because that's just dropped off so much, I think it's just gonna keep all along is what I'm concerned about. Well, I could be wrong.
You all look at it and then talk about it next meeting.
Okay, yeah.
Where's the property line at, right in the tree line?
Not sure where it ends. I don't know how wide that road is.
Right. That'd be something where you can get Brian to find out maybe. Cause I would think there's a little on the other side.
How many trees, maybe if you're gonna remove trees?
Those are really nice trees.
Yeah, nice trees, yeah. I would.
Just for your information, but if you look at the fencing around the well, that's kind of like the same new fencing that Kel, or, it's a little taller, but it's really nice out here. You miss it, unless you're.
Yeah.
I'll go look at that.
Well, my goal next meeting is to have a list of capital items for the 2022 budget for you to look at and then we will need to approve the format, the official state's format for publication at the next meeting.
And probably go approve it, that revenue thing again or not?
We'll have to have a hearing for that.
Oh, that's right, there was a hearing on that, doesn't that come at the same, that would be the other hearing?
Yep.
Okay, everybody, everyone.
Any other reports and recommendations? No committee meeting, meetings needed or nothing, I don't think that I can think of.
I'm working on ready to try to get a committee meeting together, get some information so we can talk about that bill and solar issues, but not ready yet.
Okay. We're gonna have to have an attorney-client executive session for personnel, so we'll have to have.
How long?
Twenty minutes.
I'll make motion, uh, Governor Body plus Martin and Tammy?
Yeah.
Need to make a motion to go into executive session till nine o'clock. Personnel, Governor Body, Tammy and Martin, speak freely. If you don't, nine o'clock.
Second.
Jim moves, Kylie second, all in favor? All in favor?